Motion to reopen the meeting?
Second. Second. Roll call, mostly to close it up.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Motion to close the meeting?
Second. Second. Roll call.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
I make a motion to open our new regular board meeting. Stand and salute the flag. The President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome everyone tonight to our regular Board of Education meeting. Now we're going to present the statement of adequate notice. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10th and December 6th, 2023, notice was sent to the home news Tribune, the Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, and the Clerk of the Municipality. By law, no smoking is permitted in this building at any time. Also, in addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to hearing, as is allowed at a regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law. Roll call.
Ms. Pino?
Here.
Ms. Rosada-Casada? Ms. Thomas?
Present.
Ms. Armstead?
Present.
Ms. Carrillo?
Present.
Ms. Centron?
Present.
Mr. De La Cruz? Mrs. Fleming? And Dr. Berghammer?
Present. Now we're going to go to the approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of our words session held on November 28, 2023, at a regular meeting held on November 31st, 2023. Roll call.
I need a motion and a second.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Pino?
Yeah.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer?
Yes. Before I go to comments to the public, I would like to congratulate our superintendent. Our superintendent just received the distinguished leadership award. She received it this morning, and I want our school district parents and students to honor our superintendent for this award she just received this morning. Now, I always tell everyone, this part of the agenda, it means a lot to me, and that is comments from the public. Comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes.
Board of Education, my name is Christian Mederos. I'm a senior of Linden High School. Some of you may recognize me. Just a couple of weeks ago, I stood in front of you all, as I do now, and I spoke of the criticisms that many students, families, and faculty members had regarding the incoming implementation of the Yonder Pouches. I stand here now grateful for the attention that you gave me those two weeks ago, but it is now that I request it again so that I may reiterate the concerns of the community. As students, we read of historical events in our textbooks in class in which groups of people had to compromise with their administrative powers over issues facing the community, and it is now that we are watching our textbooks come to life within our own community. Issues that we deal with regarding student mental health and social, emotional learning are ones that require several nuanced solutions, but in informational packet that was sent to families last week, only one solution was mentioned: the Yonder Pouches. If we want to address the issues at LHS, then we must consider other options outside of the pre-existing blanket solution. Such possible solutions could include as follows. We could implement social-emotional learning days, or SEL days, back into the curriculum at LHS if our goal is to aid student mental health. We could make restorative justice circles a regular occurrence in the classroom if we care about student social learning. We could hold hiring events to address the staff shortage within the high school, especially regarding the small number of social workers available to help students, and the even smaller number of professionals who have the appropriate skills to handle the influx of ESL students, not to mention the influx of students in general. A staffed school is a functional school, and the functional school is prepared to serve its students well. But many students and faculty feel as though they are not being served, and this is something that won't go away unless we confront it, regardless of whether our phones are locked in pouches or not. While we understand the potential benefits the pouches can bring, there is a larger principle that must be understood if we truly want to make LHS a better place. We hear all the time, "When you need something, talk to an adult," but this statement is known void when we kids don't feel like they're being respected by the adults around them. To quote the petition of nearly 900 signatures that my friend and I, Dani Jacks, if she could raise her hand, yeah, that's her, but that we made, and it says, "The Yonder Pouches aren't just a phone policy, but a precedent for the Linden community as a whole." It will answer the question, "Will the Board of Education respect and work for the voices that they are tasked to listen to, or will they work against them?" And with that, ladies and gentlemen, I will leave you with one final sentiment to ponder as we move into the coming winter break. What message does Linden School District seek to send to its students? Does it wish to make them feel as though their cumulative voice can pay off into igniting positive change, or does it wish to make them feel as though that their voices can't amount to anything? Because if the latter is true, future generations will have much bigger problems to worry about than using their phones too much. Thank you for your time, and happy holidays to all of you.
Hello, Board members. Can you guys hear me? Hello, Board members and superintendent. Well, Superintendent Perkins isn't here. Hello, Board members. My name is Hovina Fuentes, and I'm a junior at Linden High School. I'm an honors student, and I take honors and IB classes. On my free time after school, I do extra curriculars such as drama club, the musical, spring track, and alongside that, I work four days a week as a cashier. I am here today to talk to you about the Yonder Pouches. Now, I know that you have already purchased the Yonder Pouches, but I'm here to tell you that it was a waste of money. The problem here is not our phones, it's our mental health, our safety, and our education. You should prioritize other parts of our school instead of wasting 30 grand on phone pouches that won't work. The money could have been spent on our sports, our theater department, our clubs, school food, translators, and et cetera. Did you know it takes more than 20 minutes to find someone in the office to translate in Spanish? The largest group of students at Linden High School are Hispanic/Latino. Imagine the other parents who speak different languages. The important part of my speech is the Yonder Pouches. Us students do not agree with you at all about implanting them. You did not get majority of the stakeholders' input. Stakeholders consist of parents, teachers, and students. The first group of stakeholders I'm going to be talking about are the parents. Who are the parents? Where are these parents who said, "Yes, the Yonder Pouches"? If there are parents, can you have them speak? Who are they? Where are they? Because my parents weren't included. Were my parents not consulted in decision because they do not speak English? My friend's parents weren't consulted? Is it because her parents also don't speak English? Even parents who are on the PTA didn't receive an email. Where is this email? Why aren't we receiving these emails? The second group of stakeholders that I'm going to be talking about are the students. We're the largest group of stakeholders. You did not have our input on the Yonder Pouches at all. The only time we were asked about our input was at the assembly at Linden High School, when you had already made the decision for the Yonder Pouches. And when we shared our opinions, Principal Coons tried to take the mic away. Who were the students you consulted in before the assembly? Where are they? What did they tell you? Enforcing Yonder Pouches doesn't stop fights, it doesn't protect us from talking about fights, it doesn't protect us, it doesn't keep us safe, and it won't make our education levels higher. The real problem isn't mental health, or education, or our safety. The real problem are the fights. You're enforcing Yonder Pouches because you don't want your inadequacies showing up on social media because it makes you look bad. So solve the problem. Taking away our phones isn't going to stop kids from fighting, and then it's not going to stop kids from seeing them. The fights just won't get recorded. I also would like to address the announcement that was made. Making an announcement about the fights won't stop them. And honestly, it was a joke. Kids laughed at the announcement that was made by Superintendent Perkins. You aren't worried about us. You are worried about the parents on Facebook seeing that you can't handle these kids and that the fights are getting worse. Keep us safe. That is your job. Public relations won't be a problem that you have to solve with some pouches if you just stop the kids from beating each other up to begin with. Taking our phones away implants a new problem as well. Respect. You don't give us students respect. If you want respect, then you must treat us with respect. Now, I know Mr. Coons said that he doesn't care about our respect because he is here to be our principal. Through his year and almost a year and a half, he has shown us that our opinions don't matter, that he has no respect for us. Your staff has shown that they don't respect us when a student said that she was suicidal at the assembly in front of the principal and vice principals, in front of Principal Coons. Ms. Principal Coons responded with, "Good point, next question," and rolled his eyes. This student is suicidal. Now, in the case that my speech has changed your minds and you decide that you are finally ready to listen to our students' opinions, I believe that you should make a text entry assignment on Canvas where we can be able to freely type our requests and opinions about the Yonder Pouches. When we used to have uniforms, it wasn't until the district sent out a survey to the parents asking their opinions. Of course, as we experience now, majority said that they don't like the uniforms. Now, we freely have no uniform. This is just an example of what we can do. I want to thank you for your time and for listening to me. I hope that you have a wonderful day, and I hope that you really do take what I said in consideration, as this is how me and majority of the students at Linden High School feel. To conclude my statement, who are the stakeholders? Who make this decision? Is it just this board? Are these voices the only ones that matter? Or is it the thousands of people that you didn't consult? That it's going to affect the parents and the students? Thank you.
I want to thank you for your comments, but please keep it at three minutes, seeing that we may have other people who have to speak. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Xander Remo. I live at 610 Chandler Avenue. I am also a senior here at Linden High School. I take three IB classes, and I'm a leader in one of my classes. Now, many of my peers before me and after me are going to be talking about the Yonder Pouches. I will not be talking about that today. Although I am here in process of it, I understand that there are going to be many more who will give better points than I ever could. I'm here to talk about the staffing issues in Linden High School. I fear that it is quite evident that we have an understaffing problem in Linden High. I remember one day where one of my classes had a substitute, and it was my vice principal, and he was doing his own work in the class that he was substituting for. And I understand that it might be hard to find teachers, especially in this economy and this market, so I will not implore you to take a good look at that, but I do implore you to take a look at our more janitorial staff, specifically our custodians, repairmen, and any faculty of the like. To put it simply, Linden High has been suffering a lot of problems physically, like building-wise. Our floors are dirty, trash isn't being cleaned up. I work in the media room, a hotspot for many students, and we recently got it cleaned, and it was not done to the most efficient way, and it certainly had missed a few spots. And recently, the bathrooms in the academy building overflowed, and it flooded the whole first floor, and it, in layman's turn, it smelled bad. I am here simply because the custodians are overworked, and I feel bad for them because I see them, I have worked with them before in terms of trying to, you know, help them clean up. I run multiple clubs in my school where we have to clean up our own room because there's not enough custodians to clean up after us. And although it might be the polite thing to do to clean up, it should not be our jobs. It should not be our, ooh, what's the word, prerogative to purchase our own cleaning equipment when the school is very ample to, but just doesn't have the resources or manpower to do so.
My name is Danielle Jacks, 504, 504 Roselle Street, and I would also like to talk about the understaffing issue. The person that went before us talked about a student who expressed how they had suicidal ideation and had to wait. I was that student. The understaffing issue is everywhere. It's the custodians, it's the teachers, and it is the social workers. I was in a moment of crisis. I am okay now, but I was in a deep moment of crisis, and I had to wait 20 minutes to get a crisis screening, and I think that's egregious, to be honest. And I think the understaffing issue needs to be addressed before anything else. And I'm like, I'm also here with the Yonder Pouches, but like, the understaffing is insane.
Firstly, I'd like to apologize that we both came up here, and I apologize if we're taking too much time, but I want to make one last point, and that is the fact that I know the Board of Ed has our best interests at heart, and our atmosphere is directly correlated to our work ethic. And if you want to better our atmosphere, to better our work ethic, I believe hiring or keeping the place clean should be a priority. Our hygiene is fairly important, especially when it comes to 2,000 kids packed within, like, two buildings. But other than that, thank you so much, and have a happy holiday if I don't see you.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Christina Ramos Rodriguez. I live on 312 Jefferson Avenue, and I am a junior at Linden High School, and I am once again here to talk about my issues with the Yonder Pouches. For starters, they won't work. There are plenty of videos on YouTube on how to open the Yonder Pouches without needing a key and without damaging the packages, the pouches. We can also get the key ourselves on Amazon for relatively cheap. But let's say hypothetically that these pouches do work. If your staff members enforce the Yonder Pouches as strictly as you want them to and as suddenly as you have been planning to, most students will not blame you because they are uninformed. Instead, they will blame your staff simply because they are the ones who have to enforce the rules, and the students will become resentful towards them. Many of you have worked with teenagers at one point, or you have teenage children or siblings, and you probably remember that when a large group of teenagers don't like someone or something, they will make their feelings very apparent. Eventually, it begins to take a toll on that person. This person in this case will be your staff. Your staff members will resign, and we all already know how chronically understaffed this district is. Instead of going forward with your plans as you have been talking about, I would recommend listening to the representative for the student body of Linden High School that you chose, and instead only use the pouches for the students that have a consistent problem with being on their phones in class. Thank you.
A student advocate, do you have something to say?
Good afternoon. I had a meeting with Ms. Perkins, the superintendent assistant, and Mr. Coons, and we discussed the Yonder Pouches and the way to go about them. And the way they made it clear to me is, we have to, you're not, they're not forcing you to put your phone in the Yonder Pouch, but they cannot be seen. School is a time where you should be learning, not where you should be on our phones. And for the mental health problems, we're trying to implement a student-led group where if you have a problem, you could go to your peers if the social workers are busy, but that's still a program that we're still trying to get the details right and talk more about with Mr. Coons and Mr. Happel and the Board of Ed. Thank you.
I do want to correct you. Putting your phone in the Yonder Pocket, it's not optional. Thank you. All right, anyone else? Is there anyone online? Would you wait until the second commends, please? Because we have a commence at the end of the meeting. We would love to hear you at that time. Is she here? Okay, all right. So we're going to move to our next agenda item, which is our superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. The district is deeply saddened to learn the death of Gerald Colbelly. Gerald Colbelly started working for the Linden Board of Education in 1962. Mr. Colbelly was hired as a math teacher at Linden High School, where he taught for 35 years until he retired in 1997. Mr. Colbelly was a fixture at sporting events and school activities. On behalf of the Linden School District, we offer our heartfelt sympathy to the family and friends. Our thoughts are with you, your family, at this time. Staff attendance patterns for December. In December of 2022, we were ranging about 50%. This year, in 2023, we're down to 46%, and we're covering 64% of the absences with substitutes. The highest amount of absences so far for December was 161. That number is down from last year, which was 162, and those were on Mondays. On Thursday was our lowest amount of absences with 116, and that's also down from the previous year at 134. We would like to congratulate the students who made honor roll and high honor roll at the high school. The superintendent attended the breakfast, and we wanted to congratulate all those students. We also wanted to remind the elementary parents that the report cards will be available on the Genus Parent Portal on December 19th, and you'll receive a reminder notification. Another great aspect of our Linden High School community, we would like to congratulate two seniors, Miles Hamilton and Alosine Kimokey, who will be revealing their college choice at a signing day celebration at Linden High School. So we want to congratulate those two students and wish them the best success when they reveal what university and college they're going to. We would also like to thank the faculty, staff, parents, students, who helped plan the Navy Ball that occurred last Friday. It was a wonderful event. We're excited to present. Next week, we will be sending out a flyer for a video on a public service announcement contest. This event is for students to participate in, to create public service announcements on school safety and security by creating a two-minute public service announcement video. And there's going to be some money involved in this. So for elementary students, the ones that win will get a $500 fee. For middle school students, will be $750, and for high school students, they can earn $1,000. Reminder, that winter break starts on Friday, December 22nd. Students will have a half a day with no lunch served, and we will reopen school on Tuesday, January 2nd. I'm now going to turn it over to Azuri Rainey for her to present her report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to kick things off on a positive note by sharing some exciting news about the work that students, including myself, have been doing as a part of the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy program at Linden High School. Recently, we had the opportunity to visit multiple elementary schools in the Linden community to engage in meaningful reading sessions with the kids. During my time at School 8, I had the pleasure of meeting an amazing student named Alyssa. Her vibrant personality and balanced energy were truly inspiring. It was a powerful reminder of just how much younger kids look up to high school students. I believe experiences like these highlight the positive impact we can have on our community, and I'm proud to be a part of a program that fosters such meaningful connections. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now transition to our program, It Takes a Village Award. So Ms. Annabelle Lewis is going to help me.
Ms. Annabelle, before you start, I would like to speak a little bit of our public service announcement. It is, you know, we are encouraging all our students, or elementary students, or middle and or high school students. We sit here, and you think that we, you are not heard. You are heard. You also have an additional opportunity to go and have a video, right? A two-minute video that will be played, that you'll be competing. And based on the content of your video, it will be placed on, the winners would be placed on our local Channel 36. So a lot of the stuff you come up here and say, you also have an opportunity to make a video, place that video in our competition, and the winner will be on TV, the winning video for the elementary, the middle schools, and the high school. So you have an opportunity to continue to be heard. And now I will turn the mic over to Mrs. Lewis.
We will be proceeding with our It Takes a Village celebration.
So, okay, so we're going to be starting with our student representative first. So I'm going to call Dr. Olivero to come up, and she will be presenting the award to this student that was nominated.
Nadia Ismaili is currently a fourth-grade multilingual learner that joined the school for a family last February, speaking no English. Nadia's journey has not been easy. In spite of the circumstances she has endured in her short life, Nadia remains positive and determined. From day one, she came in with a strong desire to improve her language skills. Nadia has consistently demonstrated an exceptional level of motivation and dedication in her pursuit of bilingual proficiency. Her commitment to mastering two languages in the span of one year is truly commendable and serves as an inspiration to her peers. What truly sets Nadia apart is her unwavering enthusiasm for learning and her willingness to go above and beyond to expand her knowledge and develop her language skills. Whether it's participating in classroom or seeking out resources to enhance her understanding, Nadia consistently demonstrates a strong work ethic and a genuine passion for learning. She is a beam of light that has inspired not only the students, but the staff, and has taught us to be grateful for everything that life has to offer and to never take anything for granted. It gives me great pleasure to present Nadia the It Takes a Village Award representing School 4.
If we could get the board member? All right. For the second award, it will be for a staff member of the district, and we're going to have Mr. Coons come up and actually present this award. So Mr. Coons, please come up.
Thank you, Ms. Olivera. Good evening, community. Linden Board of Education. In my years as high school principal, I've worked with some very good ROTC programs, but none greater than the Linden High School Naval ROTC Program led by a wonderful, wonderful man named Commander Boyd Decker. Yes, let's give it up to him. The Naval ROTC Program is a pillar at Linden High School. Commander Decker and his team are second to none. They run a wonderful program day in and day out. His students are well-mannered. They work extremely hard. They're extremely disciplined, and it's a joy to be their principal. Commander Decker is a master teacher in and out of the classroom. He understands auditory, visual, and kinetic learning applications and how to brilliantly weave them all together to edify student learning. His instructional methods are world-class. His students, they work day in and day out, and they're very disciplined. They are very organized. Their trips and celebratory events are so, so brilliant, so well put together. It's a wonderful experience for the students. It introduces the students to so many aspects that will empower them as they move forward in the real world. I consider Commander Decker as a senior leader at Linden High School as a thought partner. I have tremendous amount of respect for him. We talk daily. We have a lot of conversations, and it is truly, truly an honor. I can go on and on and talk about the wonderful things that the Naval ROTC brings to Linden High School. Every morning when I when I drive to work, I get to work about 6:15, 6:30, and you'll hear his students running around and doing their cadence and marching and doing all of these wonderful things in the cold winter and the hot sun. I mean, it's just a tremendous, tremendous program, and I'm so proud of all of them. I'm proud to be their principal. I always say I'm the proud principal of Linden High School, and I truly mean it. When I met Commander Decker, I had the conversation with him, and I said, this man really loves his job, and you see it day in and day out. So at this time, I'd like to give it up for Commander Decker.
You know, one of the things I loved most about you, last year, you had so many children got full scholarships to college. I saw students got $100,000 scholarship plus $50,000. I saw so many amazing things. What I'd like to see, I want to see next year from your ROTC, we double it. We got $3 million last year. I want $6 million this year.
All right. And for the last award that we have for tonight, this is a community member that exemplifies It Takes a Village. And for this one, we have Dr. Burkhammer that will introduce this person tonight.
Thank you, everyone. You know, selecting someone who is part of your community is very, very hard. Sometimes for a whole month, you sit down and trying to figure out who is deserving of the respect and the and the of an honor of of a community spirit. I met this this lady about a year ago. I didn't know her name. She didn't know my name, but she came up to me. She said, Dr. Burkhammer, I want to know you. I want to work with you. I want to share your story. And I loved her immediately because I saw that she represents the heart of Linden. For a very, very long time, she has been volunteering. She has been putting her heart into what she loves and not getting rewarded for it. Most of us will not do that. Most of us, when we work, we want to get paid. But this young lady works because she loves us all. She loves the people that live in Linden. She loves our city. Our award tonight goes to Ms. Donna Elizere. Tap into Linden.
community. The superintendent and the executive leadership wishes everyone a safe and joyous winter break and a prosperous new year. Be safe.
Be safe. Thank you.
And that concludes the superintendent's report. We have a presentation. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a presentation tonight, a demographic study.
What was the purpose of this undertaking? So we projected your enrollments for the school district for the next five years, going out to the 28, 29 school year. Other things that we looked at were your community's population trends, things like fertility rates, birth rates, age characteristics. We looked at your historical enrollments from the last decade to see where you were coming and going, both at district-wide and by elementary, middle, and high school grade configuration, as well as by school. We did other things like looked at how many births are in each one of your elementary school attendance zones, because that'll be your kindergarten kids five years later. We computed something called student yields, which is the number of children per housing unit for different housing types in Linden, such as apartments, townhouses, and single families. We contacted the Linden Planning Department to find out what kinds of new housing is planned here and how it could impact the projections. We compared your building capacities to current and projected enrollments to see if you have a shortage of seating or surplus seating. And finally, we pinmapped all of your student addresses from two different time points to see if there's any changes of where people live over time. So here is the city of Linden over time. You can see that in the 70s through about 1990, there was declining population here. In 2020, there's about almost just about 44,000 people. here. In 2020, there's about, almost just about 44,000 people. Everything to the right of that vertical line, there's only one point, is from a third party organization called the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, and they're projecting Linden's population to be around 50,000 people in about 27 years. So who are you as a community? This is one of the most racially diverse communities in terms of equal racial distribution across the board. You can see Hispanics are the largest racial group. This is in the 2020 census, by the way. Whites are second largest, and black African Americans are third largest, but it's again fairly equal. An increasing Hispanic population here and a declining white population. The median age is fairly similar to that of the state. One third of the population is foreign born, which is also fairly interesting. Haiti and Colombia, the two largest sources of foreign born population. Bachelor's degree or higher, about a quarter of the population has a bachelor's degree or higher. You can see all the New Jersey values as well to see how you compare. Household income, median household income is about 80,000, which means that 50% have incomes higher than that and 50% have incomes lower. There's more than 16,000 housing units here, of which about half are either single family attached, which is like a townhouse or condo, or detached, single family home. 27% of the homes are duplexes here. 45% of the housing units are renter occupied, which is quite a lot. And the median value of an owner occupied unit is about $307,000. So that's who you are as a community. There's the school locations scattered across Linden. You can see where we are tonight at McManus in the northwest part of the city. Here's the elementary attendance areas. If you actually carved up the attendance areas, this is, if you live at this particular street, you go to this particular school. So you can see like School Two on the far eastern side of the city's got the largest geographical area for student residents for the elementary school. So let's talk about the district's enrollment. So when we look at enrollments, we always look at it on the same date every year, which is October the 15th, which just happened two months ago. And the 23, 24 enrollment, which is this year, your enrollment was 63, 34.5. Point five means there's a, someone's doing halftime here and halftime at a O-Tech or something like that. If we look back 10 years ago, your enrollment was 6,027 and a half. It doesn't really tell the whole story. It looks like you gained 307 students over that 10-year period, which you did. But really what happened, you had enrollments going up, 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 up through 1920 school year, and then something called a pandemic happened. Like your, your school district and many that I've worked with around the state, the enrollments declined in about 2020 and 2021. You can see declines there. 183 students and 69 and a half students. We found from a lot of our research that some students didn't stick around. Their families moved. They might have went back to where their, their families were in another part of other states or other countries, or they just homeschooled because they didn't want to go remote learning. We've been through that whole process. So, but there was a very, very large gain here this year of 328 students. I think a lot of people kind of returned back, either if they were in different locations or homeschooling. We use something called the cohort survival ratio method to project enrollments five years out. We'll talk about that in a moment. But you can see, take a look at the enrollment there. That's your, their overall enrollment going up, up, up. There you can see the decline during the pandemic. It's been fairly stable around the 22 year, and then this big jump just this current year. So this is interesting. If we look at your enrollment broken down by elementary, middle, and high, you can see that the elementary enrollment actually, which is the top line in blue, was going up through the 18, 19 year before it reversed trend. Most students that left during pandemic times in most of the districts I work with are elementary students. Parents didn't want to send kindergarten students to school, and I can hardly blame them. So you can see the biggest decline in that line up on top, the blue, is at the elementary level during the pandemic, and then this big jump up again in 23, 24. At the middle school level, there was increasing enrollment through 1920. That's the red line on the bottom, and then it stabilized. You can see the high school kind of declined through 17, 18 before it reversed trend and has gone up. So really quickly, how do we project enrollments? Well, we look at the number of students that exist in one particular grade at one year, and then where, how many students are in the next year. So I give you a very simple example. If you have 100 first graders in the 22, 23 school year, they're going to become second graders the next year. And if you only have 95, which means that you lose five students in the net, the survival ratio is 95 over 100 or .95. We do that grade progression for birth to kindergarten all the way up to 11th through 12th. So there's 13 possible grade progressions. If the values are above one, you're gaining students due to inward migration. If they're below one, which in that little simple example it is, you're losing students due to outward migration. So what we do is we take an average of maybe four or five years, because you know, there's always an anomaly. Of the 13 possible ratios, eight of your ratios were below one. So in the net, you have people leaving Linden, outward migration. In 2020, five of the survival ratios in that year were the lowest in the last 10 years due to the pandemic. And we excluded those when we used, in the calculations to project your enrollments, because what you do is you take an average ratio for each grade, and then you multiply it times the current grade enrollments to project your future enrollment. So the next thing we look at is births. Births are used to project kindergarten students five years later. We looked at birth data from 2008 to 21. They were fairly stable, but they declined the last two years outside of the historical range. 33 fewer births in 2021 as compared to 2008. And we looked at births by elementary attendance area as well. There you can see births over time in Linden. You can see that dip at the very end that I'm talking about, where it's 425. But we looked at your births and how many kindergarten students show up five years later. You can see that what we do is we divide the third column by the second column, and that gives you the last value in red over there. All the values are below one. This is the birth to kindergarten survival ratio, which means that if you have 400, 4500 students that are born in Linden, not all of them are coming here. A lot of them are leaving at some point in time by the time it's kindergarten age, because all those values are below one. And during the pandemic year, you had the lowest value, .772. So that means that 77% of children who were born in 2015 came here in 2020. These are just births by attendance area. The only thing of note here is School Two in red has the largest number of births. If we aggregate all the births over time, and School 10 had the fewest. And this is just showing, back in 2008, if we took all the births and looked at them at an area called a census block, dark blue is where the greatest number of births occurred in 2008. And if we fast forward to the present, which is 2021, because that's the most recent data we have, you can see that where the dark blue spots are, where the greatest number of births that have occurred. And if we look at it in aggregate over time, again, the dark blue would indicate where the greatest number of births occurred. So this is just helpful for us to determine where the births are. When we looked at your community back in 2010, this is what's called an age sex diagram. Females are in green on the right, males are on the left, and all it is, is the percentage of males and females from ages zero to four, all the way up to 85 plus. And in 2010, the largest groups for males were ages 45 to 49, and for females was 50 to 54. So it's an older population. However, let's fast forward to 2020, and you can see that the largest group now for males is 30 to 34, and females is 55 to 59 as they've aged, gotten older. So the biggest decliners you can see are in red over the last two, 10 years are 15 to 19 for males and 80 to 84 for females. And the biggest gainers were people in their 60s in, in the city. So we did contact the housing, planning department to find out about new, new developments. You can see there's some fairly large developments that are planned here. United Lacquer Warehouse is being converted into a mix of commercial and residential properties. The Clark property was recently approved. It shows about 334 potential units. All in all, about 825 new housing units here in, in Linden. Most of them are in what's called a TOD zone, which is transit oriented development, which means they're closer downtown toward the train station. And because of that, they're not expected to have many children, and the rents are incredibly high. So this is where the new housing is located. All those little things in yellow you see are the location of where a new housing development is planned. The prior slide did show you which tenant zone would be affected of the elementary zones. 98% of the housing units will be in the School Eight attendance area. When we look at historical construction over the last six years by elementary attendance zone, you can see that there's some, lots of housing units have been planned and developed here. A lot of them have been recent projects such as the Meridia projects, Lifestyles One and Two, and something called City Village at St. George Avenue. So that has occurred recently. And we did look at how many students come out of houses here to estimate how many children would be expected out of the new housing. But what we can see here is that most children here live in a single family home, a duplex, a triplex, or a quadplex. They don't really live, and you can see in townhouses very much, those are very, very small yields, .078. Apartments, also very small, .089. So when we did some calculations, and this is really getting into weeds, we expect about 32 public school children from those 800-plus units that I just mentioned a moment ago. And the reason it's so low is because we use some comparable properties that were just constructed in Linden that we think are similar in rent, similar in bedroom distribution, and we don't believe that there'll be many children in those types of developments. This is just a slide to show you that the intense research that we did on this project for townhouses, this is just a list of all the townhouse developments in Linden, the general price of how much they cost, the bedroom distribution, the year built, how many units, how many children from your school district live in each one of those developments. Then we computed what the yield is. That's just the number of children divided by the housing unit number. And we compared it to the yield that we computed for you back three or four years ago when we worked with your school district. This is actually the third time we've worked with Linden. And really, the, the yields have not changed. We also did this for apartments, but there are so many apartments in here, I couldn't possibly, it would be three or four slides if I put it on a PowerPoint, so I didn't bother to put it in. Home sales, very interestingly enough, very strong in the last 10 years here. After the housing market crash in 2008, 2012, that whole four-year period, take a look and see how many, how strong the housing market has been here in Linden. So the crux of this story tonight is where are your enrollments going? We did project enrollments five years out. We did it for each of the schools in the district. They're actually projected to decline. Even with this big gain that we saw in the most current year, the decline is because of two things. Number one, you still have outward migration of students in the net going on. And the second thing that happened is that the birth rate has declined in the last couple of years, which means that you're going to have a smaller number of kindergarten students five years later. So if we go five years out, we're projecting about 254 fewer students than where you are today. And we look at that by elementary, middle, and high. This is just showing the enrollment now, and then by year for the next five years. Down the very bottom is showing the change in enrollment for the five-year period for elementary, middle, and high. And they're very similar, as you can see, across the board in terms of decline. So it's not like one grade grouping is declining and the other one's not. They're, they're all going to decline. So we take a look at your building capacities for all the buildings and see how that compares to your current enrollment. And if you see blue, which is the fourth column, that means you have surplus seating in those buildings. If you see red, that means there's a shortage of seating, and it might be a little tight. So right now, you have about four buildings that have a shortage of seating. It doesn't mean anybody's not in a classroom. They might just, no, they're not being educated out in the hallway. It's just that it's, it's probably a little tighter than the way it was designed. By the end of the five-year period, there's only three schools that have red up there. And by, in my, in my experience, it's really not that, this isn't really that bad. I see some schools where the surplus in seating or the shortage of seating are in the hundreds. And everything here is probably below 60. Last thing we did is we created maps of where your students live from two different time points, 2015, 16, and 22, 23. And we looked at the number of students by census block, the student density by census block, and the yield by census block. So here you are in 22, 23. Here's where all the students live. It's kind of interesting, because you know, I, I think of the industrial areas, obviously in the School Two area is probably not in the Turnpike. There's obviously nobody living there. But those green dots all stand for where some student lives. And if we aggregate them by a census block, dark red, a magenta color, is where the greatest number of students live. And you can see in the central part, central part of Linden, and this is in 15, 16, by the way, where the greatest number of students live. If we fast forward to the current, you can see there's a greater number of magenta or dark red. So I like to toggle back and forth. So you can see, that's 15, 16. There's 22, 23. So you can actually see that there's more students per census block now than seven years ago in a lot of these census blocks. But census blocks can be either really small or really big. So how do you compare them? Well, you divide them by the area of the block to standardize it, which is called students per square mile, which is the next slide. So this is called student density. So the darkest means that is the greatest student density per square mile, which is dark green. And that's in 15, 16. If we just advance to 22, 23, you can see, oops, it's really not terribly different, a little darker. And the last thing is the number of students per housing unit, which is dark purple. And this is 15, 16. Going to 22, 23, you can see a lot more students, a lot darker and purple. So there is definitely growth in those census blocks compared to the 15, 16 year. It's kind of interesting. Lastly, we talk about COVID. COVID has affected many school districts across the country, some more than others. I work in New York City. They had a decline of about 37,000 students during COVID. But you can see LA, Broward County, which is in Florida, and some others, they've also had big declines. And a lot of it has to do with people working remotely. Will people continue being able to live anywhere they want because they have a remote job? Or will they have to come back to where their primary residence is because they have to come back to the office? Your guess is good as mine. I, I really don't know what's going to happen with remote work. But a lot of people, I don't live in New Jersey anymore. I now live in New England up in Vermont. And we did see a lot of folks from this area move up there, and a lot of them couldn't handle the winter, so they left. But there are other parts of the country where they might have stayed, like Florida, where it's a little more temperate. But this is how this population of the US changed from that first year of the pandemic. You can see in dark green, that's the biggest gainers. Magenta was the biggest decliners in the country. So it's hard to tell, but you know, the, the Heartland, which is the central part of the country, lost the most people, and the Rockies gained the most. But what about New Jersey? And there's New Jersey. The biggest decliners is the grays. And it's really the Turnpike corridor that lost, lost the most people, right from Hudson County, Union County, Mercer, Middlesex, straight down the gut of the Turnpike. The biggest gainer in, biggest county was Ocean County in yellow after the pandemic. And I always thought that was the people from, say, Burton County buying their, or going down to their Long Beach Island summer home or something like that. And I think that, that's possible. So what's the summary tonight? The summary tonight is that you do have declining enrollment in two years because of the pandemic before you saw this large increase. Looking ahead, we're projecting enrollment to decline for the next five years, particularly due to this lower birth rate in the last few years, and also due to outward migration of students in general. Decline is expected to be fairly uniform across elementary, middle, and high. And finally, even though you have 825 housing units planned, we're not expecting many children out of them because they're all multifamily units. Multifamily units are apartments, townhouses, things like that. They do not generate as much children as a single family home would or a duplex. And that's where the most number of children that you have in your particular, that's the type of housing they come from. So we're not expecting many from those particular housing types. So with that, I will, any questions to the board? Well, so what you, what you, what you said is actually, one of the issues I, I talk about a lot of my presentations is the delaying of the birth rate for women. It used to be, you know, my mom always said, when I had you, I was the oldest mother in, in the hospital, and I was 24. And everybody had their kids at 18, 20. Now, you know, people are delaying births or not having births at all. So yes, fertility rates are, have dropped in this country pretty drastically. And we're finding birth rates in finding birth rates in most places that we, we do work in are declining. And yes. Are we taking questions for public? Yes? Citizen Linden's in the report. It's, talk about it tonight, this is a brief PowerPoint, but the report's like eighty pages long, believe me, it's in there. One, one other comment, because I want to talk about this capacity just really briefly, is that there's so many different considerations if you're thinking about expanding or doing additions. It's not just, do we have surplus, do we have a shortage? You gotta think about lots of things. You gotta think about building conditions and age. You need to think about programming, because if these numbers for capacity are based on something called your long-range facility plan, which is your architect puts this together, and it can change like this from year to year. This is not a fire code capacity, it's based upon how you're using the building. So if you want to take general ed classrooms, which maybe hold twenty-five kids in a class, and you start making, you know, gifted and talented, special ed, English language learners, that's smaller capacities, guess what? That changes your building capacity because you have fewer kids in a classroom, so that's a fluid number. So this is a continual process. That's a big decision for the board. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. One last item, I just wanted to mention that there was a video that went out to the community about the teacher of the year. If you haven't seen it online, please take a look at our website, because we honor all of our teachers of the year and our staff members of the year. So please take a look at that video. And that concludes the entire superintendent's report. Thank you.
I want to thank, that was an awesome demographical study. All right. Before we move on, anyone, any board member have any comments on the, on the study? Okay. So then our next agenda item is our education report.
Good evening. The Education Committee, upon recommendation of Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent, present the following motion of Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve one through twenty-five. Do I get a second, please?
Second.
Any comments?
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes, to, well, I would like to recuse myself from agenda item number nine, thirty-eight through thirty-nine. I, yes to all of the agenda items.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Our next agenda item is Personnel Report.
Personnel Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the district's receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue funding. I approve items one through forty, and I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call. Any, any questions?
I want to excuse myself from page twenty-four, number four, item one.
Any other? Roll call.
Ms. Pino?
I approve everything except for number four, page thirty-nine. Thank you. Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Our next agenda item, Finance Report.
The Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve items one through twenty-three. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Buildings and Grounds?
The Buildings and Grounds and Security Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval, items one through three. I ask for a motion to approve those, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Planning and Policy?
Planning and Policy Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent, present the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval, second reading of policy number five-one-four-one-point-eight, title, sports-related concussion and head injury. I respectfully ask for a second for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Our next agenda item, once again, is comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask questions, please utilize the raise-your-hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
Good evening. Craig Haller in one-twenty Donaldson Place. Since the last board meeting, I believe it was on New Jersey Spotlight News, I had heard that the state changed the wording from mandates to guidance, and I presume that's just a legal technicality, I don't know whether it means the states still do up to their same old things, mandating stuff, calling it something, but in case they are changing the wording and the definition of how to use state guidance, how does that affect the operation and running of the school system?
I'm not sure what your article you're talking about or what you're referring to, but generally speaking, a mandate is something that you're required to do, a guidance is something that is suggested, but you're not obligated to do it.
This was, I, I believe it had to do with the school system that was suing the state over certain mandates, I'm not quite sure, but obviously if the state is saying, well, now instead these mandates for those schools, they are now a guidance. So a grant date, I do understand that a mandate is like a law, you have to follow it. Guidance is something maybe not quite as severe. And I'd just like to make a comment about the student that brought up about the sewage backing up in the school building. Having had years of experience in this field, it's not always easy to find where the blockage is in a pipe, so the blockage could have been out in the street, and it affected that particular area of the school building in a certain way. I don't know, I wasn't there, but I do know it's not fun to work with, but it cannot be done by just anybody, it has to be done by professionals to find this, and it's not fun to do. Thank you.
I assure you, we would look into that. No student should have to live through that. So this is something that we will have our, our maintenance crew look into that immediately from tomorrow.
Okay. I do wish, I do wish, wish everybody a happy holidays and a great new year.
Hi, Donna Hernandez, one-three-three Princeton Road. Last month at the, I guess, end of the meeting, it was brought up about the lunches at the high school. I know previously Pomtonian has been at board meetings, I'm not sure if all of you have been there when they came and spoke, but I know that they have state guidelines they follow. So I know a big thing was their portions were pretty much from elementary to middle school and high school were pretty much the same, where we all said that, you know, high school kids are bigger, they do sports, they, they eat more. I know they, again, they have to follow state guidelines, but they were giving a little bit bigger portion. I know we have a new board member coming in in January, but maybe we could have Pomtonian, you know, come back and just discuss that again. I know, I don't think we've replaced our HR manager, but I ask everyone sitting up there, this also has been brought up in the past, some of you have may been on the board at this time, some may not. We have had many teachers and staff in the past three years resign. They have worked in our district from one year to twenty-five years or longer in our district, and it has been asked by members of the public why they're leaving, and some of the board members' response was it was due to COVID. Maybe for a few of them at that time, but I know staff that have given up their tenure and went to other districts, so it wasn't COVID. Last month, we lost another great teacher after working in our district twenty-one years. So something is going on. Has anybody thought about doing an exit interview? And I know in the past, that has also been brought up at meetings. So hopefully that's something to think about. Again, the letter about the yonder pouches went out about consequences. There could be a fine, community service, in-school suspension, or detention. So taking the students out of their classes where they do the work and are learning, putting them in ISS to sit there and do nothing, how will that help these students improve their test scores? Students that take the bus home, I'm not sure if they are, leave a few minutes early now to catch the bus to get there on time. Will these students be allowed more time to leave early so they can go unlock their pouches and get on the bus? The buses are on a time schedule, they need to drop off these students and either go back to another school for a pickup, or come back to get our students for sports, or they may have to go to another city for a pickup. Do you know if these buses will wait until the students are all on the bus? So now these students leave early while the teacher is finishing his or her lesson, is that not a disruption to, disruption to the class? This is a question that maybe the lawyer can look into. I have read that students' cell phones that, if they're caught with it, will be taken away. A parent has to come and get it because they are a minor. We have students that are eighteen years old in school, they're considered an adult. So do they come and pick up their own phones at the end of the day? Because they can sign themselves out. Last month, many of students came up with their concerns. It seems like no one's taken in consideration their opinions. I say that because I am told that plates are being installed all around the building that unlock the pouches. It was also mentioned about elementary students doing well with test scores because they don't have phones. Comparing a high school student to an elementary student is very different. One, most elementary students don't have phones, and they don't, if they do, they leave them at home. Elementary students getting hour for lunch, thirty minutes to eat, thirty minutes to play and go outside. High school students get twenty minutes for lunch, and again, the only time they have all day, they can't use their phones. How can they go to a place, explain why they need to unlock their phones to check in on work, a parent, or make a call, when they don't call when they have enough time to eat lunch? And if they do need to buy lunch, now they have to wait in line with only twenty minutes. And if they do need to buy lunch, now they have to wait in line with only 20 minutes. Maybe you're thinking they should eat lunch, then go to the office to use their phone or unlock their pouch to use their phone, to make that call or send that text. But now they will be late for class and miss instructional time. When they could eat their lunch, send a quick test message. Also, if a parent or guardian has to hold their, get ahold of their student, they can't wait until the end of the day, we have to now call the office, ask to speak to them. The office needs to look up that student, then call the classroom, and stop in structural time to disrupt that class to have that student go to the office. So I just want you all, please, these students come up here, they talk, I know you do listen, I hope you do take everything into consideration. I want to have, I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday, Happy New Year, thank you.
Oh, there's no pen.
Can I put a pencil? Can I put a pencil? Can I put a pencil?
I don't know.
There's no pen.
I guess, put a pencil, yeah.
Easy.
Good evening, my name is Erica Hernandez, 133 Princeton Road. I'm speaking here tonight as the senior class secretary and a student who's ranked 22 in the senior class. For the second month in a row, I'm here talking about the yonder pouches. I'm not going to sit here wasting everyone's time to talking about how I dislike them, but instead I will give you valid points that should make you reconsider your uses for them. First, I want to ask, has anyone compared using these pouches to other school districts around us, or districts that have the same demographics of us, that tried using them and see if they worked in those school districts? Because I know Clark, a neighboring town, has tried to implement these pouches, and it did not work in their high school. Second, high school students have jobs, so what if they get a call during the day from their job and can't respond about a shift change or asking for them to come in earlier? If they get fired, then what happens? All because we're getting, being babied and getting our phones taken away. Third, at 14 years old, which is middle schoolers, you don't have a job, don't have colleges that call you throughout the day, and just don't have the responsibilities as a high schooler does. Fourth, why was the student handbook changed to where students are not allowed to use their phones in the halls, crossing the street, or in lunch? Is this time interrupting educational time? Because personally, I don't think so. You are taking away the only time that students have off during the school day, and they can't even use their phones. And not allowing our high school students to be able to wear a smartwatch, to me, is absolutely crazy. Fifth, how are these pouches getting us college-ready? Because like I stated last month, colleges will not do this, and if we don't get our work done, that's on us. Also, I've seen the bases of the unlocking systems be put up, especially by all of the side doors. Are you going to have someone sitting there all day? Because anyone could go and unlock their phones there. Because I've never seen any faculty members stand by those doors. So why don't you make these pouches disciplinary and something that everyone needs to have? Why didn't we instill not having phones inside the classrooms instead of spending all of this money? There were so many things this money could have gone into, and I would note, because I'm in the halls every single day and I see it for myself. Why didn't we ask the parents' opinion on how they feel with having their high schooler getting this pouch? If you think these pouches are going to work, you're wrong. I'm in the high school five days a week, seven hours a day. I hear what the students say, and it's not good. Thank you.
Hi, I'm back. Zander Remo, 610 Chandler Avenue. Don't worry, I'm not gonna, it's not about the yonder pouches, I'm not going to give you any new rhetoric or any new directives from me, you know my stance on it already. I had forgotten in my last speech to mention something about the infrastructure of our schools, specifically the library and the learning commons, as said, in Linden High School. There has been multiple accounts of a mice infestation and roaches showing up. And knowing that it's a library, many of the mice have torn up the books and use it as bedding for their nests, and many of the roaches have been seen dead inside the vents. I personally have cleaned windows and I have cleaned the media room, and I've seen dead roaches, I've seen the mice, I don't know how to say this without being rude, droppings? Thank you. So I want to bring that up as well, because it has been brought up to like admins and it's been shoved off, and it's still a problem. I care about our learning environment, and the learning commons, as I said before, is a very big hotspot for students. And to see roaches, to see dirt and grime, to see mice droppings and evidence of such show up, it's, it ruins our atmosphere. Especially since I personally run multiple clubs in the media room after school, where we had to clean up after ourselves, and we have found these things, and it disgusts some of my members in my club. It's gone to the point where I had to buy a vacuum, I had to buy cleaning equipment and mice repellent. I just wanted to bring that up again, nothing further, I'll keep it brief, I know we've all had a long day, and I know you're probably tired of all these yonder pouches. But again, these yonder pouches are a very important topic, and I know you'll listen to us, because I have, I put my trust into you guys. I believe in you. I believe that you will listen to us, and I believe that you will find a compromise with us, because I, if I didn't believe in you, I wouldn't be here. I'd be doing, I'd be doing something else, right? But again, thank you. I have to write my name here? Yes, thank you so much. All right, sorry, you know how nerves get to us. Once again, happy holidays, and that demographic presentation was phenomenal, and it actually made me want to learn more, just want to say that.
All right, good evening, y'all. I remain Rob Mengele, 18 Trinity Place, Montclair, New Jersey. LEA president, LHS Social Studies teacher. It's late, I'm gonna do my best to keep it short. I want to take a moment at this season of appreciation and gratitude to acknowledge a few things I'm grateful for in our buildings. I'm first and foremost grateful for the opportunity to represent the almost 1,000 members of the Linden Education Association. So many of the great things that happened in our buildings happened because of that. They happened because of the time, the dedication, the energy and the enthusiasm of the folks in our buildings. Right? And to represent them is something I'm incredibly grateful for. I'm grateful for the fact that folks show up day in and day out. Okay. I'm grateful for the staff, for what they do, how they show up and they take care of the thousands of students. The students who have spoken over the past few months, the past few years, they're the products of the hard work that we put in. It is, it is an incredible opportunity to get to watch, you know, as, as school staff, so much of what we do is like waiting for a tree to bloom. We plant seeds, and we sit and we wait. And I teach high school, and I can't imagine being a kindergarten teacher, being, being a secretary in an elementary school, a nurse at a middle school, and having to wait so long to see the impacts that you have. So it's really a nice opportunity to get that here. I'm grateful for the relationships that we get to build. I'm grateful that we get to build with our students, I'm grateful for the relationships we get to build with each other. I've said for a long time that, you know, I've been here a decade. Linden, for a long time, was a wonderful place to work. As we look ahead to a new year, although it's not really a new year in our schools, I hope we can work together to strengthen our district. We have a lot of questions, we have a lot of answers to sift through. And one of the things that I've started to adopt is not looking for the simplest answer, but looking for the best answer. That takes time, that takes energy, that takes communication and commiseration and cooperation. I hope we go for the best answer instead of the easiest answers. Before we get to that, though, I'm looking forward to taking a break, I'm looking forward to exhaling, I'm looking forward to enjoying the holidays. Happy everything, y'all, we'll see each other in January.
Thank you, Sue. Is there anyone online? Before we conclude our comment section, I want to commend each and every one of our students for being able to come in front of the board and be an effective advocate for what they believe in. This is what being a future leader is all about. It's about being able to come in front of each and every one of us and talk about what you believe in. But as Mr. Mengele said, sometimes, sometimes, as you say, there is no simple solutions. We just try to get the best solution. But I would continue to encourage all students to be able, because you are being prepared for the future, and being in the future, you have to be a good advocate. Never stop talking about what you believe in, and we would listen to you, we would listen to you. So I want to thank you again for tonight, and for all the students who are listening online, I wish each one of you an amazing Christmas, and I hope you get good, good presents, right? So now we're going to move to our next agenda item, which is new business. As I mentioned earlier with new business, Linden Board of Education is looking to, we are trying to see if we could create some interesting initiatives that could help our students. One of the initiatives we are looking at right now, as I mentioned earlier, is to get our students, if we could make it happen, we are looking to get our students not to go out to work at McDonald's, but to work within our school districts. This is the, this is a model that has been used in Europe forever, where the kids from the time they're in the 10th grade, they start making money in school. And this is the model we are looking, we are, we are doing investigation right now to see if we could expand our school, our school CTE program. Now, any other board member have anything to talk about regarding their vision for district?
Well, we want our district to thrive, we want it to be better than it has been, and it is going that way in that direction. We just have to look to one another for support, as well as to the community for support, and not shoot down so quickly what has came about or is going to start, because we have to start somewhere. And if we don't start at the beginning, we got to start somewhere, because we have to pull each other up. It doesn't matter where we at or where we going, as long as we go together and there's no camaraderie, but we're going to have pushback no matter what we do, but when we get pushed back, it's okay, because we know how to get to the next level. And as long as we have each other and one another to help us, we can do anything that we put our minds to, no matter what the problem is, no matter what the situation is, we can always depend on one another, okay?
Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say, before we move to board members' comments?
Just what I mentioned at the, at the work session, there's an outside firm that I wanted the board to meet with, just to go over how we could better advertise ourselves or like work on our social media and marketing.
And I would encourage our students, who, we have another opportunity for them to use their voice. We have the video, the public service videos, and the competition that we will, when would, when would we be, when, when are people, when is it starting? Tell us, could you expand more on the, because Donna Hernandez asked me earlier to expand a little more on the video, the public service competition, could you expand on it a little more for us?
Of course. So the Public Service Announcement Competition is an extension of the It Takes a Village Award, and so we're partnering with the city and Honorable Mayor Armstead for this initiative. And so the purpose is for our students to utilize their student voice, to, and also to utilize their creativity in creating videos where they're speaking to student violence and student safety and student wellness. And so the students, all of the videos will be entered into a competition. One elementary school student will be receiving a cash incentive of $500, a middle school student will receive a cash incentive of $750, and a high school student will be receiving a cash incentive of $1,000. So it's really an amazing opportunity for our students, and also an amazing opportunity to continue to strengthen our partnerships, and really share some proactive information about student, student wellness and school safety, and again, most importantly, giving our students the voice that they have. And so this information will be forthcoming next week, and then we're looking to receive all of the video entries mid-January.
So how, how, how are we going to, how, how are they gonna, firstly, it's not one student, it could be a group of students.
Yes, yes.
Who get together to create the video.
It could be a club, it could be one student, yes.
But then, how is it, they just submitted to the board, and how would you select the winner for, do you, would that be instruction as to how, are you going to pick a board of principals from all the elementary schools? How are we going to pick the people who will judge these videos?
So there will be a committee of various stakeholders, including school officials, as well as community members, that will view all of the video submissions, and then according to a rubric that's created, they'll determine the selected recipients.
So, and you guys all know that we have a local television station, so the winners would have an opportunity to get their student to be at least on TV, right? So, yes, so the winners will be in TV, so that's, that's a great opportunity for students' voices, you know, the student voice is an important voice, so we want to hear from you. Is there anything you guys want to add, or any suggestions you guys have regarding this public service competition that we want to launch next month?
Are we advertising this on social media? Like how are we, how are we disseminating the information?
That's a question Donna had, how are we gonna, how are we marketing it?
I think we do a lot of good things, but I think that sometimes it's just not, it's not disseminated properly, so I'm just, I'm just curious, like to know how.
Maybe, maybe January, if you're starting it, if you're launching it in January, we have to, when, when are we gonna get all the videos? Is it going to be launched in January, and then all the videos going to be in between January and March? How is it going to work out?
The information regarding the specifics and including a flyer and how to submit videos, all of that's actually coming out next week. It'll be shared throughout our various social media sites, as well as a blackboard email, which will be sent out to the entire community.
And seeing that we're partnering with the city of Linden, are we going to see if the city of Linden themselves is going to be marketing it as well on the city website? Because it's a, it's a community, you know, effort between the city of Linden and the Board of Education.
I, me and Lamari work for the city of Linden, and we're in a public relations team, but the website, that's different, that's teleapp is with them, so that would be a whole other person that you would have to communicate with. But in terms of PR, there's an email to which any of that can be sent to, there's Facebook and Instagram, and press releases even, if need be.
So, so you think you start with a press release first, so, so that we could get a lot of participants in this competition, right?
Absolutely.
All right.
It seems like you said that the videos would need to be due mid-January, is that correct?
I, I can double check that.
No, you said you're launching it mid-January, but the videos can be due because it's not launched yet.
I'll have to double check that.
So I think the videos should be due maybe the ending of March, because they have to have enough. have enough time to prepare the videos.
That was my reasoning and asking, because it would be a quick turnaround for the students to upload the videos and create it.
Yes. Thank you.
You know, they have to have enough time to, to prepare it and get it out there. Any, you guys made some good points. Do you have anything, young lady, to add? You're quiet. You have anything to add?
Once the like flyer go out, I could definitely make a post on the Linden 2024 page. We have a big following and put like flyers around the school. I feel like TNC News and like other clubs like that, they'll definitely be interested in something like this.
It takes a village. It takes a village. Anyway, anything else so we could move to our next agenda item? Ms. Pino? Board members' comments.
Good evening, everyone. Family, teachers, and students, thank you for coming out and giving us your opinions and telling us how you feel. We appreciate it and we take everything that you guys say into consideration. See, this is why I like writing stuff down, because when you write stuff down, it just goes all mumbo jumbo and you just say stuff out of the ordinary. But thank you guys for coming out, we appreciate it. And to the two senior students, congratulations. And to the It Takes a Village, congratulations on all of that. And Ms. Thomas and Sam de la Cruz, thank you for coming back, we appreciate it. And to Ms. Ulysses, who's sitting in the audience, thank you for joining us on the board. We appreciate that. And to all the teachers and the staff, thank you, we appreciate all your work that you guys is doing. We're noticing everything that you guys are doing, we see all the improvement that you guys are doing and we appreciate that. And the students, I appreciate you guys coming up here and talking and saying what you guys have to say. I know it's hard, because it's hard for us sitting here, listening to things that you guys want and want us to do. We appreciate you guys coming. So thank you very much, everybody. Happy holidays, happy new year, and let's bring 2024 in with a bang. Thank you very much. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Ms. Sasia, before you start, I did, I was supposed to do something first before I introduced Ms. Pino, and I didn't. I wanted to introduce our new board member and for us to hear from her. I am so sorry, I should have done it first. Please forgive me. Would you please join us at the podium and share with the public a little bit about yourself?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kimberly Ulysses and I'm a Linden resident of 35 years in the fourth ward. I'm a mother of four, a sister, an aunt, a cousin, a friend, and a future wife. I'm a proud daughter of two left-handed parents. My passion is helping people and seeing smiles. I've worked with special needs for 15 years, and while doing that, I graduated with my LPN. Currently, I work for Linden Health Department, which I love, because I'm out in the community in various events. I stand here today because the village that I am a part of elected me as a new board member to serve the children in our village. I've come to, I've come to several Board of Education meetings and see, and see members of the community take the It Takes a Village Award home. Now, the residents of my village awarded me. I want to thank all of the Linden residents who supported me. I was elected to work and that I will do. I'm here to serve you and our children. I'm proud to be a part of the Linden Board of Education. The board members work so hard for our children, and I thank you. I'm just so happy I'll partake in the work that they do for our children. Once again, I would like to thank the residents of Linden and the Board of Education. Everyone, happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to start off by congratulating Ms. Perkins. It has now become a legitimate honor to work with her. Condolences to the family and friends of Gerald Colbelli, and a big congratulations to all award recipients. Welcome to our new board member, and happy holidays to all.
Good evening, everyone. Like Sasia, I will keep it short and sweet. Again, thank, congratulations to our superintendent, Atiya Perkins, for winning the Women of Distinction Award. She is more than deserving. Congratulations to Ms. Ulysses, we are so happy to have you and I'm looking forward to working with you on your new journey on the Board of Education. My condolences to the Colbelli family. Congratulations to all the It Takes a Village Award recipients and to all the students that came up to speak about other issues going on with the school. Thank you, we appreciate it, and I encourage you to continue to come to more board meetings following this upcoming year, because we love to see your faces and we love to hear your concerns. And happy holidays, everyone.
Very nice. Hello, all. I would like to congratulate Ms. Perkins for receiving the District Administration Woman of Distinction Award. I'd also like to thank Mr. Kuntz for how well he's handling the new upcoming adjustments despite the recent kickbacks. Thank you to board member Fleming for her service to the district and our country. Congratulations to the recipients of the It Takes a Village Award. It's a well-deserved, to the student named Nadia Commander Decker, thank you for the invitation to the Navy Ball. I apologize that I was not able to attend, I was attending a city event. Donna Elizera is a dedicated publisher to our city, so congratulations to her for the award. Looking forward to attending the LEAD graduation in January, which is school number eight for the fifth graders. So LEAD, if some recall, is the DARE program, similar to it. So it's Law Enforcement Against Drugs and Violence Educational Program in the Classroom to Prevent or Reduce Drug Abuse and Violence Among Children and Youth. So yeah, I'm looking forward to that. Like I said, the graduation will be in January. I would also like to express my sympathy to the family and loved ones of Gerald Colbelli. Now, lastly, lastly, but not least, in the last meeting, I have mentioned a clothes drive. I was wondering if we could collaborate a partnership with the City Linden Social Services so we could accept donations for various clothes drives for our students who are less fortunate. Maybe being stored in the school nurse's office as a possibility for, for the clothes to be housed. So this way, there's no, let's say, the students are embarrassed to accept clothing that they, they might need, so. And that's it for me. Happy holidays, all. Look forward to seeing you in January. Thank you.
Happy holidays, everyone, and I wish you all a wonderful winter break. Thanks to everyone who came out tonight and everyone who's online. We appreciate you and we thank you. Have a good evening.
Once again, I echo what you just said. Happy holiday to all. I want to specially wish a happy holiday to our 6,300 students, or 1,100 staff members, or board attorney. You're there, we forget you all the time. So thank you. Happy holiday to you as well, sir. I also want to wish a happy holiday to parents and our community. And I want everyone to have a wonderful, wonderful holiday. Have a blessed, blessings to you all and good night. And we're ready to close the meeting, right? Yes. I want a vote to close the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Yes. Erica, I should have come and let you do this for me today.